But the main reason that we gathered here a little bit early today was to say thank you and we appreciate it and hang out as long as you can with us. But Dina started her new job with the city of Fairburn earlier today. And on behalf of the town and council and staff, thank you for all the work that you've done over the last...
It's been a hard decision, y'all know that. Elizabeth, you know, she hired me and Ellen Wiles and it's just been a wonderful three years here. I wished I could be disgruntled and just leave, but I'm not. And it's just making it so hard for me. But I'm gonna be around and I'm gonna make sure that, you know, the town succeeds because I'm not gonna leave them in a bind like it was whenever I started. I wanna make sure that, you know, everything is being done and the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so I'm still gonna be around for a little bit.
Yeah, and we are still utilizing Dina for the financials until we get a new clerk in place and trained. We do have an intern/summer assistant coming in tomorrow morning to kind of shadow and tour and just see what it's like and kind of what the work duties will be. Even if we're able to add a summer employee, I would still like to get an intern just to help with catching some of the phones and just some of the minor administrative duties.
Yes. Yes. So Julie, are you gonna be here tomorrow?
No.
Oh, that's right. You're just gonna be here Wednesday.
I didn't know that. So are you gonna be here all evening or do you need to leave at a certain time?
Well, I'm gonna be here, I was gonna help her with some of this.
Okay, okay, well, I just didn't know if you were...
And Brad is gonna be able to answer a lot of questions that...
And let me just say, if you'll wait till the end of the meeting to appoint your interim clerk, then she can sign all the stuff already held.
Absolutely.
And then the interim clerk can later certify.
Okay.
How about we do that?
Perfect. That would be great. Okay, so the first item on the work session agenda is the, oh, hey, Ms. Polly, is the discussion on the site prep for the Triangle property. As part of our larger sewer infrastructure projects, we will be extending the drain line on the Triangle property for the leach field, for the municipal septic system. As we are doing that work, it seems now would be a good time, if we're gonna do any work, to turn that into either an active or a passive park. So one of the things that I wanted to bring to council for discussion, we don't have any direct action on this today, but I would like to come up with a plan for making the Triangle just a little bit more attractive, maybe do some additional plantings, maybe do some gateway stuff, maybe do some just general improvements to either make it an active or passive park. What I'd like to do is just start looking at it, start coming up with some conceptual and presenting some ideas to council, so that when we do begin to work on the leach field extension, because we know we're gonna need to extend it, we can consider any other improvements that we want to make.
I'd like to compliment you on, at this stage of the game, bringing it to council to discuss.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because one of the things that I like about the new way that we are kinda doing the meetings is the work session gives us a chance to talk through it and then when we come to the actual action item, we've had a chance for open discussion and open conversation about it. Is there anything on that property or Triangle that we think would be of a benefit? You know, right now, we've got our welcome to Sharpsburg sign.
Lots of trees.
Pardon?
Lots of trees.
Understory plantings and bushes to cut down both the traffic and also to make it look pretty as we're going down the road.
It's getting really loud.
Mm-hmm.
Well, for the record, there is no plan for a park there. There is no plan for a series of paths to cross it.
Uh-uh, no.
There is no plan for crossing to go to church side. None of that's...
No, 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 there has been no official plans presented, uh-uh.
Well, I think with the size of it and the location of it, vis a vis the 54, it's short term and long term. It's, as far as an active park, it's a non-starter. People aren't gonna go up there with picnic lunch with back, you know, with bumper bumper cars on 54.
Right.
And trucks. It's not gonna do it.
Yeah.
It's hard to access.
Pardon?
It's impossible to access.
You can access, there's no parking.
Yeah. So I think it presents an opportunity where if we are gonna have something on there, we can simply make it attractive, rather than it just being invasive species or weedy undergrowth, we can actually plan it and plan it and maintain it and keep it, keep it looking good.
Well, what are you gonna do, if you do that, what are you gonna do about the area next to Polly's house? What are you gonna do about the area by the, by the other places we've got that are weedy?
Um, it's gonna depend on who has access or priority, I guess, on the right-of-way, whether it be DOT or the town. Any place that's on DOT right-of-way that is weedy and overgrown, they would be the ones that would maintain it. Any city streets would be, of course, the city or the county that would do it. If there's a particular place that's overgrown, we'll just make a request of whoever we need to clear it back and maintain it.
Well, I would like to see a work, I'd like to see these things discussed in a work session as opposed to hearing the tractor.
Mm-hmm, right.
Blue one morning. I mean, not capital blue, little blue.
Right, little blue, yep.
Yeah. It's, because you don't necessarily, you don't necessarily want it. You don't wanna go whack Polly's bushes down.
Mm-hmm, right. All right. The next item on here, the 54 commercial line authorization, that will be in the new business. We have, we are awaiting the work authorization from Krebs Engineering. They are the engineer for Water and Sewer Authority, working on the 54 North Line that would eventually serve Dollar General. That's the $3,000 that we're splitting between Dollar General, the county, and the town. So there's no action really based on that, other than just that we are waiting on it.
Will we automatically be able to go under the highway to the other side of 54? To the east side of 54, those lots over there?
To the east side of 54.
There's nothing over there, nothing but a couple of houses and some vacant lives.
I'm thinking it's probably gonna go up the east side of 54, so that way it's not disturbing any of the active driveways for the commercial developments. But it's gonna be the engineer, though, that will drive that.
All right, but let me change the question a little bit. I mean, will people on both sides of the street be able to access the pass lanes?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. And in fact, I had a conversation with Ted Schumate earlier today to see what potential businesses he could bring to the table, because one of the things that he's talked about in the past is converting all of his office spaces and buildings from septic onto sewer. And that, of course, gives us some redevelopment opportunities as well.
It's almost a clean slate.
Really is. Yes, it is.
Look, that was in the old business.
Pardon?
It's gonna be in the old business after that.
Right, but since it was in the work session, I just wanted to go ahead and just touch on it.
Well, that line dropped down to 12 Parks line, or will it turn right and go up 154 to the high school?
No, sir, it's gonna go down to Keg Creek.
It'll tap into 12 Parks.
For Dollar General, as an update on some of their activities, they have cleaned out the detention pond. I am not sure if they have completed the electrical work. The path out there beside the storm drain is still open, so I would assume that both of those things are undone. They are working towards completing the repairs and they're still communicating with us, they are still responsive to us. They were scheduled to be here tonight, however, unfortunately, I don't, I don't see any representatives from here. Brad, what is the next step with Dollar General? As long as they are working towards the repairs and improvements, is there any action that...
I would think that if they're actively working, that you can just assume they didn't, even though they appealed, they didn't show. So we'll just write them a letter and tell them that they haven't, you know, objected to the decision and, you know, as long as they continue to make progress and make progress reports, then the town will not suspend the occupational tax certificate, but the town reserves the right to do that.
Okay.
Well, it appears to be no sense of urgency on their part.
No, there doesn't.
I mean, it's not just this, like I told you before.
Right.
Dollar General wants to put a band-aid on another thing. They don't wanna fix it.
Yep, yeah. And, you know, and we're gonna monitor it and we're gonna stay on top of it and if it continues to have any kind of issue, we're gonna, we'll come back.
You're talking about a multi-billion dollar company.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, your item number three, you got Dollar General appearance. Were they supposed to show up here? I thought that's what I thought, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, that doesn't mean how the place looks, that means them showing up.
Uh, so on the agenda, it says Dollar General appearances, does that mean appearance of the store or appearing to the council?
Yeah.
I took it as the appearance of the store.
I thought you were, well, you added that one, so I'm not sure.
Right. I mean, both.
I thought you meant with the...
I can dig it.
Because they mowed down the...
They have cleaned that out.
The detention, retention pond?
Mm-hmm.
But they didn't cap everything outside and Bloom sent another email and we haven't heard back from them to date about fixing the lift station part.
Because all the people on our side of the table are saying that it's the pumps, it's the lift station, it's not the other things. It's those components. So with this rain today, it'll be interesting to see.
And tomorrow.
And tomorrow, oh, is it raining tomorrow too?
They're gonna tap onto the sewer system, but that's still a year, two, or three, or four away down the road. They need to get this fixed now.
Yes.
Gosh, it's never been an issue.
So that's where we are with Dollar General. While, of course, we would love for them to do more, they do continue to communicate and work towards fixing everything up.
Just keep pressure on them.
Mm-hmm. So the Dollar General alcohol licensing and the special referendum election, those are actually two separate, two separate things that we will talk about in the new business part of the agenda, so if we can just hold off on those. The various is on the fence and the frigid frog. We had a homeowner wanting to install a fence, we thought they would have a variance, however, they don't. They were able to, they went back and they did something else. The frigid frog variance, your information, would be on their sign, however, they have not submitted anything. I think the variance is gonna be more the setbacks, how far it is off the highway, to be in line with the other signage out there. Number six, I'm sorry, do you have any other questions?
Well, I was gonna say, we gotta put a 5.5 in there and say variance, fence, frigid frog dash appearance, 'cause that place looks like hell.
Thank you. She promised it was not gonna look like hell. She promised it was gonna be beautiful for the town of Sharpsburg, if y'all can recall those exact words.
I remember something to that effect.
Yes.
Anyway, I stand by my 5.5.
It does look kinda reggae down there.
Well, you know, the way that they got the ramps up to the windows, it looks awful.
I didn't even realize she was open.
Yeah, she knows.
It doesn't look open.
There's a sign up there that says open. Neon sign.
Item number six is the Sharpsburg Market Street Festival. We are graduating from the park and expanding up into Main Street. So we will have a motion before council to close Main Street from Town Hall up to the intersection of Main and Tarrentine on June the 19th, and they are gonna have a number of vendors both down here in the park and up along the street. We've got a couple of representatives from Team Hungry here, in case y'all have any questions. It's something that we've been talking about for several months. We have the security plan built in, we've got the traffic plan built in, and we'll just ask council for approval to close the streets on June the 19th. Lori, is there anything else that you guys would like to... It's a work session, shoot. Let me, okay, we'll come back to you. I'm sorry, it's a work session. We, yeah, it's a work session, my apologies. And then the general election memo for council members qualifying and registration schedule, that is our resolution for the election superintendent for our general election coming up in November of '21, and then the qualifying and registration schedule. So, just a quick hit on the work session, do we have any other questions about any of the items that we talked about or that we had on the proto-agenda?
You will need to amend the agenda if you wanna talk and vote for closure of the streets for the Sharpsburg Market.
Okay. And then we also need to amend the agenda for the interim clerk, okay. Okay. So if we don't have any other questions or comments on the work session part, we will exit the work session and then begin our regular council meeting. All right. I'll call the council meeting to order. If everybody would stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have a present?
Yes, we do.
All right, so the first item of business is the review and approval of the council meeting from May the 10th. All right, so Tom has the first.
Second.
Elizabeth has the second. All in favor?
Yeah, I wasn't here, does that still vote in line?
He wasn't here, does he still vote on the minutes?
He can vote.
Okay, he can vote. Yes, unanimous, thank you. So before we get into the new business, I would like to get a motion from council to amend the agenda to add both the street closures and the resolution for the interim clerk.
Make a motion.
All right, so Elizabeth has the first, Stan has the second, and the motion was to add the street closures and interim clerk to the agenda. In order to be conscientious of visitors' times, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up the street closure item first, if that's okay with everybody. On June the 19th, Team Hungry will be hosting a street fair. We wish to close Main Street from Town Hall up to Main and Tarrentine. It would be closed from, what would you say, 8 o'clock in the morning till...
Probably 8:30, so that we can hear our vendor setup, 8:30 to 2:30.
Okay.
Market's over at 2, and so we would release them as soon as they were packed up, so by 2:00 for sure.
Okay. What we would do is we would reach out to the county and county public safety officials and let them know that the street will be closed from this time to this time. We'll probably get a couple of road closed signs from the county to put up. Team Hungry does provide security, as per the normal farmer's market, security will be provided here. They have, or they are working on completing the special event permits.
I actually haven't, and I had submitted it back in Wood, and I actually have it all.
Yeah, okay, excellent, yes, and we've got a copy as well. Everything is in order with council's approval of closing the streets. That will bring the, everything current, and we just are grateful for Team Hungry and appreciate all the stuff that you've done here and what, all the people that you brought into the community.
Well, thank you guys so much on behalf of Team Hungry for allowing us to do it, 'cause I know it's been a big undertaking on your part, and Dina, thank you for your help.
Also, too, I think Jeff is gonna talk to you about having some of the students deliver flyers to people residents on Main Street that we're gonna close Main Street that day, just for those few hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that a flyer that we need to create, or can we get that from you guys?
To be determined. We do have a few final details to work out, especially on like the notification and stuff like that, but we will, we'll take, staff and mayors will take on that.
Yeah, 'cause there's only a few houses there that would have to be notified.
Yeah, that would be directly impacted. All right. Do I have any other questions from council about the street closures or anything? Okay, if I can get a motion to close Main Street between Town Hall and the center of town on June the 19th from 8 to 3.
Motion.
All right, so Stan has the first, Tom with the second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right. Julie, did you get the motion down? You got the details of the motion? Okay, all right. Okay, so the next bit of new business, now we're gonna go back into our regular flow of the agenda. The work authorization, so one and two go hand in hand. This is the downtown septic expansion. The work authorization for $6,000 is for the construction drawings, the cost estimate, and then the design work for connecting the buildings up here to the system down here. The additional $2,500 is for the survey work that's gonna need to be done for the lots to basically graph and chart the fall from there over to here, for a total of $8,500. The original estimate that we got, ballpark estimate for the downtown connection was between $8,000 and $10,000. I still think it's gonna be closer to $10,000, but the work authorization in front of you is for $8,500. I still think it's gonna be closer to 10, but for right now, their authorization is for 85, and this is just the next step to getting the municipal septic system started and operated.
This is just engineering, basically.
Yes, sir.
We need two votes, one for the engineering and one for the survey. I'll number two, if you see it was broke down separately.
Mm-hmm. But, yeah, this is the construction drawings for the system.
For engineering, yes.
But you're saying you think it's gonna be closer to 10?
I think so.
Can we, on that motion, make it where it is? It does go up to 10, would the motion be at 2 also?
I think so.
Wouldn't want to come back and do it again.
Yeah.
If it exceeds 10,000? Yeah, I would make that motion to not exceed 10,000.
Okay.
That would be for both one and two, correct?
Yes, sir.
Let Six tell us if it'll work.
Um, yes, yes, it will. Well, the if it will work is already, I don't want to say it's already determined, but this will tell us what it will take to work and what parks they need for it to work.
Capacities, pump sizes.
Yes, sir. Part of it is also they're gonna have to do a soil test and do some hydraulic stuff up on the Triangle to make sure that they've got the leach field that they need in the soil study, so that's part of it as well.
Is there a timeframe involved in this, or just whenever?
Hmm, we've got about three to...
It said about a month.
Yeah, I was thinking three to four weeks.
Yeah, two weeks for the design and two to four weeks for the health department permitting and stuff. And then the construction phase, well, we gotta vote on that, right?
Yeah, and we will have a chance to go out and get bids and whatnot for the construction estimate, so this is not for actual digging, this is just for planning.
I sure would hope that the county health department would take a, I don't mean, I'm not inviting a critical eye, but I'd like them to look at it realistically when they look at it.
They have, they have met us up there.
There seems to be a feeling, I get the feeling, that we can get away with murder as a town. They'll just let you do whatever you wanna do, and I don't want that to happen up there when I live downstream of the leach field.
You're right, they, they do, and the onus is on us to do our due diligence. We can, yes, you're right, we can do a number of things, but our responsibility isn't doing the due diligence, which I believe we're paying for by working with DPH, 'cause they've already been up here to talk with us, and then having qualified, knowledgeable, skilled engineers to tell us how to do it right.
Let me put it another way real quick, just, it'd be nice to have an educated pair, second pair of eyes looking at it.
Outside of the engineers or outside of...
Just the county, let the county, let the county see what you're doing, and they're cool with it. I mean, because I'd rather have them be cool with it than, whatever.
We told you. Yeah.
On the construction side, is that gonna be, is Ruby's gonna pay some of that, or Team Hungry?
Um, to be determined. That's a determination that we will have to make once we identify the capacity, charges of the capacity that they're gonna use, and then once we come, we come up with our rate structure, because this is gonna be, this is almost gonna be a utility, there's gonna be a monthly rate for this service. If we want them to pay some upfront capacity charge, then we can certainly ask them to, but that'll be something that, that'll be a decision, I think, that we make as we get closer to it.
Yeah, you almost need to anticipate in the budget, anticipate maintenance.
Yes.
Maybe not the first year.
Yes. Well, one of the things about this system back here that this year has taught us is every January, we're gonna have three or four people that we call to come out here. We're not gonna be caught short like we were this year. And of course, that was several years of lack of maintenance, but no, it's gonna be a yearly thing.
A bit of maintenance.
Yes, we're gonna check that filter, probably gonna pump it out and...
Well, those lines have still got to be moved, 'cause that has, that work hasn't been done either.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that will be done with all of this.
You know what it could be?
Yeah, I would wait until all of that.
You know what it could be?
That would save a lot of money, several thousand dollars.
What are you talking about?
Those lines are dropping.
Remember, being the ones from over here at the...
No, right here in the back, right here.
Probably, how old are those lines?
Two years.
We talked about it.
It's the ones, it's the lines that have the belly in it right out here.
Yeah, remember, the lines are doing like this and all the stuff is catching and, ooh, yeah.
Low points.
Yes, so it needs to be, the lines need to be brought up and I don't know what all needs to be put, or, yeah, more dirt in or...
Lines need to be raised off.
Yeah. But I would do that during, in the construction phase, so that we, it's not a double bid.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We need to, whoever we do this bid for needs to, needs to repair those as well. Thank you. Okay, so if, so Dina, did you say we need to do this in two approvals?
Yes, I would, because that's how they submitted it, they didn't put it in... Yes, I would because that's how they submitted it. They didn't put it in one. I would, I'm sure the survey is gonna be closer to twenty-five hundred dollars than the work itself to be six thousand. But I would put that the total cost, including survey, would not.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, exceed.
Alright, if I can get a motion to approve items one and two not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, Elizabeth has the first.
Second.
Stan has the second. All in favor? You know, I thought that too and I've already knocked it down a couple of times, but it does seem a little humid. Item number three is a resolution that sets our qualifying fees for the upcoming election. As y'all know, we have posts two and four, Cynthia and Elizabeth coming up for election this year. The qualifying fees are gonna be twenty-five dollars for council members as it has been in the past. It'll be carried out by Jane Scoggins and it is August.
Sixteenth through the eighteenth, I believe.
Yeah, sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, I believe.
And I do need everybody to sign the resolution if it's approved tonight.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Alright, so Elizabeth has the first, Tom has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Item number four also has to do with the election. This resolution appoints Ms. Jane Scoggins, who is the Cowan County Election Superintendent, as our, our, the town's election superintendent, as we've done in the past.
Make a motion.
Second.
Elizabeth has the first. Who has the second?
Tom.
Tom, Tom has the second. All in. For Jane? No, sir. This is the IGA that we have with the county. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so item number five is a resolution for a special referendum, a special referendum. Brad, you're gonna have to help me here with this. A special referendum in the upcoming election for the package and sale of distilled spirits. Basically, what has happened is the governor has signed a bill that allows counties and municipalities to put package sales directly on the ballot through a resolution of council. That does not mean that we'll automatically start selling liquor in Sharpsburg, but what it does is it gives us the ability to craft an ordinance and allow it. The county, other municipalities and other municipalities across the state are doing this as well. So if we don't do it this month or next month to get it on the ballot in November, we will miss that opportunity to add package sales following the approval of the referendum by the voters.
And didn't it used to have to have a referendum?
Yeah, you had to have a.
Petition.
A petition. Like a third of the voters.
A third of those on the voters. Yes, that is gone.
Well, no, it's still there.
It's still there, okay.
All they did was House Bill or Senate Bill one forty-five added that the council could call by resolution. But the petition is still there, so if the council doesn't call for it, the voters, I mean, you know, interested citizenry can still bring forth a petition. And if they get the requisite number, then the council would have to call for the referendum. But this is the same option that we had back in ninety-five, ninety-six when everybody put on the agenda referendum for on-premise consumption of distilled spirits. Alright, so this is, it's the identical thing except this is permitting us to call for the referendum as to whether or not the electors in Sharpsburg want package stores. Now, what I would suggest that if you do decide to adopt this and put it on the referendum for November, that during the period that you begin work on your ordnance so that, you know, if somebody asks, then you would at least kinda tell them because with regard to package stores, you can limit it to one package store in town. You can limit it to twenty, alright, but it's up to you to determine how many stores you want. It's up to you to determine where you want them to go. For example, Griffin, if you look at their package, they have a very small area where package stores can go, along certain major corridors as opposed to keep them away from the more residential sections. Peachtree City, I think, still only has two.
I got three.
Three, they've got.
They've got like five. Yeah, there's like maybe six, yeah.
Only two package stores that I know of, Lime Creek and the other one that's right there.
There's one on the south side.
On seventy-four.
On the right, on fifty-four. There's two up north on fifty-four. There's three on fifty-four.
They've added more.
Go on seventy-four, one on the left and another one up there on the right. Before you get to Publix.
But anyway, that, for example, you can do that and you can limit the number of stores, you can limit where they go. You can require certain things. Now, this is an interesting deal is that City of Carrollton requires them to carry three hundred thousand dollars worth of inventory. Alright, so it's not just a chop house. Griffin only requires fifty thousand dollars worth of inventory. So, I mean, there's several things that you would have to decide as council is to.
And that's later on down the road, right?
Yeah, that would be, I would just suggest, and of course, you know, this is always the thing. Even if the referendum passes, you as a council don't have to approve it. It's just you have the ability to, you're authorized to allow.
And the option is for the citizenry to get the petition and override us.
Well. They could come up here in Groves and say, we want you to do a liquor store, we're gonna vote you out of office. No, you've already done the petition, so.
What you're saying is it's gonna be on the ballot in November. And if it's approved, it's approved. And in the meantime, we need to start working on ordinances.
Well, it's not approved. You're just authorized.
No, no, what I'm saying is we're authorized to put it on the ballot. But if it's approved, a vote in by the people. Are you saying we need to start working on a?
I'm just saying that you should at least start thinking on those things so that as you got closer to the election, if people ask you, what are you thinking? As opposed to coming back and saying, well, we ain't even discussed it, we're gonna wait and see what y'all do.
What I would anticipate doing is, is if we as a council decide to put it on the ballot, we will start working to draft the high points of an ordinance, the location, some of the particulars that Brad mentioned, some suggestions from mayor and staff as to things the council may wanna consider. And then we can go into a work session to actually craft some of the final details of it.
Well, I have all of a good point, maybe we can get some of these cities to send us there. Ordnances also, we'll have a starting point anyway.
Oh, yeah, I've already got. I've got a study, we've been working, you gotta remember, we've been working on this since the early nineties. And it took six, seven years from the late eighties to early nineties to get it to the on-premise consumption. And most of us in ninety-six already had an ordinance. We had developed the ordinance and actually published the ordinance that would be put in place if the on-premise consumption passed. Alright, at this point in time, we haven't quite gotten that far simply because Matt Brass introduced SB one forty-five at urging and nobody knew if it was gonna pass the general assembly. General Assembly has gotten a little more receptive to alcohol-related bills over the last several years. And they went ahead and voted it in and the governor signed it. The governor didn't sign it till May fourth. Alright, so we're scrambling now because to get it on the November ballot, it's got to be to the Board of Elections before their July fifteenth meeting. So you can actually, if you wanna wait on this till July, you can. I mean, but that's the gun that we're under.
Is Nita gonna do it?
Next Tuesday. Well, I say that, it will be on the agenda. And Sanoy's gonna have it on the agenda and the county, what is today, Monday?
I'll make a motion.
Let me ask one question, folks. Is underneath all that we've talked about, can we authorize someone to put a distillery in here? Like with the restaurant next to it?
Under the, under the.
Under this particular settlement?
Well, this is, that's something that we're all kinda working through right now with some of these changes that were made is to, in other words, what, in determining what defines a distillery. Okay, so I don't think that you can allow Brown Foreman to come down here and build something that's gonna put out, you know, several thousands of gallons of distilled spirits. But these craft distilleries, I think you can adopt it. Now, you know, in most of the places that are adopting them already have package sales. Okay, and so the question is, since we don't have package sales either in the county or the town, nobody has adopted that particular ordinance yet. But I think it's very clear that if this gets adopted, then certainly you could adopt an ordinance.
As a second wave or as we do this?
Well, I'm saying you might even do it before then. And that's like right now, you don't have growlers, you know, in your ordinance. You don't have craft breweries, you don't have wineries. Which all that is over the last, I don't know, seven, eight, ten years, has evolved now that you can permit those types of things, which are commercial brewing or distilling operations, which you couldn't before, but you can now.
I would suggest too, there is one particular fella that continues to call and I would set my standards on the size of the building. Probably they would wanna come in and put a fifteen by fifteen and probably twenty thousand dollars worth of inventory. So that's something that you definitely need to set. Because this man keeps calling and he probably occasionally says, I've got his name and number there if y'all wanna look at it. Y'all know who exactly probably it is, but I definitely go ahead and set those kind of requirements.
Can I ask a question off the record?
Sure.
Stan, there's already been a referendum ten, fifteen years ago that passed.
That, well, that was liquor by the drink.
Yeah, that's liquor by the drink.
That's liquor by the drink.
It's not the package.
That's on-premise consumption. This is for liquor stores.
I second Elizabeth's motion.
Alright, so Elizabeth has made a motion to approve the resolution for a special referendum election package of distilled spirits. I know, right? So we have the first, Elizabeth has the first, Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
We didn't amend the agenda to talk about the Dollar General alcohol licensing. That was something that Brad and I have been kinda going back into because they have now added, because of, they're gonna add a little marketplace in their store. They wanna add some alcohol. And I'm gonna let Brad tell you what our ordinance says now and what is gonna have to be changed, right?
I don't know that it has to be changed. That's what, the issue came up about the licensing. Right, what kinda happened, everybody, and I don't know why your ordinance got this way, you know, at the time that it was done. But most places that license package sales of beer and wine, it doesn't matter, licensee can live in, as long as it's in the continental United States. Alright, and so, you know, but what some of these places do because of the difference in the ordinances, they have a license representative. Well, the license representative generally for package sales can live anywhere in the state of Georgia. Alright, that's where most ordinances do. Your ordinance, when it was first adopted, said that both a licensee of anything, on-premise consumption, package sales, had to be a resident of the town of Sharpsburg. It also said that if it, as would, but then there was some language that said if the licensee wasn't a resident of Sharpsburg, that a license representative would have to be a resident. But then in two thousand and eleven, that was struck from one section in the application process that talked about it. And of course, the general language was that we had deleted a resident of Sharpsburg. It says that any section that is in conflict with that change is hereby repealed. So what I told Nina was that it seems like y'all have repealed any requirement for the licensee or a license rep. Now, I would suggest that you go back and at least amend that part where the license rep needs to be for on-premise consumption. And I don't think we have an on-premise consumption anymore. For distilled spirits?
Okay, not for liquor, not so.
Not for liquor, not for distilled spirits.
He can serve liquor.
He does not, he sells beer and wine only.
He can, but he doesn't. It was STO that had liquor.
STO had, but he only got, he only paid for the license for beer and wine.
But he can.
But anyway, so the idea is, to give you an example, is that, and that person has to be a manager of the business. Well, what, because of the differences across the way Kroger, for example, Publix, for example, Walmart, for example, always has their licensee as somebody in Nashville or, you know, Wisconsin. But they always name a licensed representative who is a manager, even though like Newlands does not require that. But other places do, so it's easier then from a habit standpoint to go ahead and do it. Our deal was, our concern was that Distilled Spirits brought in a whole new deal and we wanted to be able to arrest somebody in a hurry for distilled spirit violations as opposed to beer and wine. But anyway, that's it. Now, the other issue, so the young lady that was reading all of this, she's reading the definitional section, which talks about a licensed license rep. But when you get over to the requirement section, it's been struck. So, from that standpoint, I think that what they're talking about doing with the licensee is fine. Now, the other thing though is that your distance requirements are still the way that we had them back in two thousand and six in which state law has changed some to allow us to do some other things with our licensing. And what yours says is that no license shall be issued to any person selling any alcoholic beverage where the place of business of the license is located within a hundred and fifty feet of any private residence. Okay, so you've got Dollar General then sitting there and you've got a private residence directly behind it. But the method that is used to measure is you come out to the nearest roadway and then you, from the front door of the licensed premises to the nearest roadway and then you run along the roadways to the front door of the private residence. So, in other words, while from the back of the building to that house over there may be less than a hundred and fifty feet, I don't know what it is. If you, but that's a requirement that is part of the application process. They have to get a licensed surveyor to come in and do that. Plus the fact they have to show distances, I mean, you've got other things that are package sales which I don't think are an issue in that area. That, you know, yours talks about, you know, state law says you can't have it within, I think it's three. you know, state law says you can't have it within, I think it's three hundred feet of a, uh, state-owned, uh, al- a treatment facility. Alright, well, of course, that is kind of out the door because you know the state doesn't own any treatment facilities anymore. It's all contracted out, and the way, the law has not kept up with the fact that the state's not operating.
Alcohol treatment.
And we have that, yeah, we have a lot of that.
Yeah.
Pathways, for example, you know, pathways tends to go find different locations and then get people wanting it. So, we've issued opinions that says they're not a state-owned facility, so it's not applicable. But anyway, so for me, uh, it says the distance set out subsection one, two, three, four, and five should be measured from the point of public access of the licensed premise ninety degrees to the public right-of-way, then along the public right-of-way until ninety degrees to the nearest point of public access of the building housing, the protected use, then to the point of public access to the protected, to the building housing and protected use. So, if you do all those gyrations, it may be more than a hundred and fifty feet. So, as far as I'm, can tell, the only thing that would limit Dollar General filing an application is, uh, them getting the surveyor out there to do the surveys showing where these, like I say, I, I, I can't, there's no stew, uh, there's no public housing.
And they're asking for beer and wine?
Yes.
Yes, just beer and wine.
And I think the church is sufficiently away.
And the biggest thing, they wanted to know, um, if they could have the district manager, uh, because that address will be from Tennessee.
No, I, I think you.
Um, you know, they would want the district manager to be the licensee, and they would want, uh, to know if they needed to do a background check on all the officers, because normally we just do it on the manager, um, of like Dixie Dogs or Jack's.
Well, Dollar General, it's a publicly traded corporation.
Right.
I have a question.
The only one that you do is like, but, you know, two-person LLC or a closely held corporation where you have fewer than five shareholders.
Okay.
Alright, but when you've got that, the only background check you would do would be on the licensee.
Can we make this contingent on them fixing the septic?
Pardon?
Yeah, I mean.
Can we make a contingent upon them fixing the septic?
You don't have to do anything, they haven't filed an application.
Okay.
Okay.
There's nothing for you to look at. They've got to put in, and that was the other thing we talked about, is your application still refers to section six dash so-and-so of the alcoholic beverage licensing, your current ordinance is section, chapter ten.
Yeah, so it is.
But the numbers, the, the, how to say this, in other words, where it refers to the taxes, for example, it says six dash one thirty-one, yours is ten dash one thirty-one. So it's the same section numerically, it's just at some point.
We got it from two different sources.
So Brad, Brad would need to, well, it's probably, that's what we've been using since I've been here, so that's what's been used before, because we've only had three alcohol sales or license applications. So Brad would need to probably renew, revise that application for us.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's nothing wrong with the application per se, it's just it doesn't reference the right stuff.
Right.
And Dollar General repose about?
Yes, they did, and I've got an email from Regina Combs that does.
So they haven't officially applied though, right?
Yeah, they're waiting on us to find out what, if they can bypass what our actual ordinance states.
No, they can't bypass ordinance.
Well, what, what they were asking is, um, let me see, um, our ordinance was very strict. Uh, let me see, I did not find, let me see, this was, as far as officers are concerned and the background checks, that would be required of the licensee and the licensed representative, while the background check from Tennessee would be acceptable, the ordinance is straightforward on the fingerprinting and background check in Coweta County. Um, this is very restrictive, so we need to talk about this particularly when dealing with, oh, that's from you, hold on, wait a minute.
And, and see, but that's not going to be required now because they are a major corporation with more than five shareholders, right?
Not all the officers, it's just whoever the district manager is, he'll have to come down here for the licensee, and he'll have to go through the process.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, since he's going to be doing that, and know what you're saying about like Kroger and all them. I was used to you'd have to have somebody actually live in the city or the county.
Well, see, Newton doesn't require fingerprinting.
But what I'm getting at is, the district manager could be moved, so they'd have to do another one, right?
Yeah, that happens all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, and that's what's, I, I, I'm not sure, I written, I didn't read that section completely, but part, most of the ordinance is, this, this ordinance is one that was generated ten, twelve years ago. And, and so, uh, that there is a provision for transfers, alright? Now, what's probably not in this ordinance that we went through was the fact that the timing, alright, since yours is council-approved, like Newton's is council-approved on the transfers, the timing of the meetings didn't necessarily match up, alright? So the deal was from the time they filed the application for the transfer of the license, that there was an automatic forty-five day extension on the license until it went through. So, but your ordinance doesn't, doesn't have that in there, and that was the only thing we ran into, was that some of the places were saying, well, you know, my guy just walked in the door. And we didn't have them where the manager would walk into the city and hand the city the license and say, I'm out of here. So, but.
So I can reply to Regina and just ask her to fill out an application and then bring it to council?
Well, let's fix, fix the application.
Okay, yes, okay.
And then get, get her to fill it out, because see, what she's reading is one of the sections that doesn't apply.
Okay.
And then what she's also reading is a section that appears to me to have been repealed.
Okay, so you're going to fix the application, then forward it to Julie, and then we can email it to Regina, have her fill it out, and then we'll bring it to council for them to approve it, and then that's, then that's.
Go from there.
Okay, cool.
Comment on, of, what Elizabeth said, I would think that you've got enough of a hammer over them with their general license to not include anything about liquor in the septic system there, just two different items.
Yes.
It just happens to be one company that wants to go forward in the future. Just don't muddy the water.
Yes.
What a lot of Dollar Generals do, and you're talking about going to produce, I deal with them a lot, is they're taking out the clothing sections and bringing in like more home goods, is what they're doing, so that's a lot of them going to the produce.
That's interesting.
Yeah, we have, uh, well, in Jackson, they have an actual market, a Dollar General market that has a grocery store, yes.
Isn't that across that angle?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a big store.
It's a big store.
That's, that's, and that's part of why we're doing the sewer line, so they can bring in a grocery store like that. That is, that, that, that Dollar General Fresh is, is what we would love to have over there.
Well, that Dollar General does the business, no question.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, you know.
It's, it's handy, I mean, if you need something.
Yeah.
Well, how many customers did they say they had a day?
Seven hundred to a thousand.
To a thousand a day.
Walking out and saw, uh, here's him in the nineties, welcome to Shartburg Walmart. But, uh, but, you know, we still, they still need to go to a buyer standard, they need to get that septic taken before they do anything else.
Yeah, I, I just go back to, I, I agree with that completely, we just make it a separate, totally separate issue.
Yes, yes, I agree. Well, there's no action to be taken, we just wanted to talk about that in the work session, just to let y'all know what they requested, and Brad will revise the application, and we'll send it to Regina after that, and they can apply, and we'll bring it to council, and you can vote on that, yeah.
Um, the only item that we had under old business was to. Whoop, yes, sir.
Didn't you have something else on the new business that I had to?
Yeah, we do, we got it, we got it due, we have to name Brandy. Um, we have amended the agenda to add Brandy as the interim clerk. This will allow her to certify, um, minutes, this will allow her to certify stuff to go to, to Jane. And just to be clear, the reason that we're not having Julie do it as our deputy clerk is because she is getting ready to go out on leave as well, so that's, that's why we've got, we're tabbing Brandy as interim, even though we have a deputy that is, uh, here with us.
Do we know who's going to be able to be interim phones for rentals?
Um, so, yes, yes, we do, and I'll talk about some of the staffing updates in the mayor's minutes.
Okay.
Um, so if I can get a motion to appoint Brandy Phelps as our interim town clerk.
Motion.
Alright, Stan has the first.
Second.
Elizabeth has the second, all in favor, unanimous, thank you. Um, under old business, we had the fifty-four north commercial line, that's the work authorization that I'm still waiting on for from Krebs, as soon as I get that. Um, we'll bring it back up and confirm it, but that's a three thousand dollar, uh, design document that is split, going to be split between Water and Sewer, the town and Dollar General. Um, public comments, Ms. Polly?
Of course. So I had to see activity on the streets once again. Comment one, comment two, two meetings ago, Stan, Councilman Barton suggested that that sign, electronic sign be questioned on one fifty-four, and seeing that everybody agreed, and then it's, I haven't seen it moved yet.
Now, I have pulled it down, um, I am, we're charging it up, and then we're going to find a spot on one fifty-four for it to go. There is actually a poll post, I was driving by the other day, and I found a poll that I think will probably work. Um, but it's a DOT poll, so I'm debating, uh, just sticking it up there and putting it where it goes, or.
Do you dare to debate for forgiveness?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we've got a poll in front of Elizabeth's house, it's, it's ours.
You can take it up.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, I'm not taking up the poll, uh-uh, uh, no, my God, that's so much work.
Is it?
Yeah, unless you got a tractor or a piece of equipment, it's impossible to get a poll up. It's easy to just cut them off, but yeah, they're probably three, four foot deep, uh-uh.
Leach.
Oh, my God. We, we.
Do they take trade-ins?
Ma'am?
Do they take trade-ins so we could get one that's sore?
No, I wish that, no, no, because I asked them about that the last time, they said, well, no, they're, they're not interchangeable. So, anyway. Um, any other comments, Ms. Polly?
I thought we had two.
That was ridiculous.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was a septic.
I can see on the main street, you can see on the street.
There you go.
I could pick up one if you want.
Alan?
I was going to ask Brad, did you, or maybe I missed it, how far does this liquor sales or liquor stores around here, if it's approved, have to be from like churches or schools? I know you said Dollar Generals are a hundred and fifty feet by way of, I don't know, ten buck two to get there or something, but.
Because we don't have it, it's not in the ordinance. So that is one of the decisions the council will have to make in what they do. I mean, it's all kind, I mean, you, you know, some ordinances don't allow them within five thousand feet of each other. Some ordinances don't allow them within a thousand feet of a school. Alright, so the distilled spirits are handled much different than, than your packaged beer and wine. And, um, so, but, but there are some limit, uh, some minimums, just like with packaged beer and wine, you know, on premise consumption. But, so that, that's some, it's not in the ordinance.
I was glad you clarified that, you got to go around your butt to get your elbow thing, because I thought it was at Crowe Lots, but that's good.
Well, that's what.
It does that anywhere.
Yeah, so that's good.
You know, some of, it, it, there are probably nine million different ways, if you read all the ordinances as to how they, they are, and, and of course, one of the ones we used to laugh about is the fact that you would, uh, come out the door and head, head either north, south, east, or west until you came to the other place. So if it was behind you, you'd have to go entirely around the world to be able to get something, but that's, that's, you know.
So that's entirely regulated by the council, but this doesn't?
No, not entirely now, okay.
There's a minimum state.
At one time, the state set all the minimums, but gradually over the last twenty years, the state has eliminated just about all of them except for, uh, package sales, uh, of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, uh, with public housing authorities. And I think that has something to do with federal regulations, alright? You still have these that are in there for state-owned alcoholic treatment centers. There is still some minimum regulation, I think, as you say, for distilled spirit package sales from, um, uh, schools and churches. Now, for package sales, uh, of, uh, beer and wine, which is kind of what we're getting into now with some of these things, is there are still some minimums for the package sales for certain schools, but if you follow this, if it's a, what, how was this, anyway, if it's a college, if it's an upper level school, they did away with those minimums, and that was because.
My question was, did you have any say-so on how it's measured?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Again, you can say anyway you wanted to.
I, that's what I was saying, it's just.
What?
Somebody lost the diffuser.
The light cover.
Right above you.
You're in the spotlight, it's okay.
Oh, I wonder when that happened.
I don't know.
Where?
But anyway, yes, you can, that's why yours is a little different than a lot.
Well, Selena came in this morning and told me that oven was a mess. So I looked on the video this morning when I was sitting in the parking lot waiting on the office to open, and it was not this weekend party, but probably last weekend.
Yeah, I told you.
But she cleaned it, and I'm like.
You got broken, I'm so glad.
Probably.
Me too, I used to have to do that.
Um, any other comments, questions, Ms. Polly? Alan, you good?
Good.
So, so in other words, we, the council will set those distances as long as they meet the state's minimums.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, polling of council, I will start down at the far end, Councilman Teagle.
Not this week.
Councilman Barton? Councilwoman, good?
I'm good.
Good, alright. Um, clerks' minutes?
Well, I was just going to talk about the July meeting, July the fourth is on a Sunday. However, the holiday falls on Monday, so town hall will be closed, so we need to schedule another council meeting date in July.
So, are y'all okay with July twelfth?
Probably be on vacation, I'm holding on my count.
You may have one on vacation.
Yeah, we have July fifteenth, um, commu- uh, the comprehensive plan, um, meeting, and that's the final one before the approval of everything in August. Um, we'll, y'all will approve the total comp plan in August after a public hearing. So, um, all of that stuff is.
So basically, so July fifteenth will be regular council meeting?
No, the twelfth.
The twelfth, sorry, July fifteenth will be the comprehensive plan where we come up with a draft, and then in the August council meeting, we'll have a public hearing to go over the draft of the comprehensive plan. And then, we adopted it in August?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll also adopt it at the August meeting.
So the August meeting will be August the second.
Second, yes.
So, are y'all okay with July twelfth?
I am.
And if we get close to the end of, of the, and we don't have much on the agenda, we can kick it to August, but that's going to make August very congested and very talk-throughy. So we may have just a quick one in July, because we just one or two things on it, so, okay. Um, anything else, Madam Clerk?
That's it.
Huh? Uh, mayor's update, um, the main one revolves around staffing. Um, as it stands now, we are, we will be covering the office in a rotating fashion between Brandy, Julie, myself, and then we will be bringing on an intern slash summer employee slash receptionist. Um, my tentative plans now are to find an intern as, uh, intern as a stopgap measure, and then if they work out, offer them ten dollars an hour just to fill in until we can get either Julie back or get a new clerk hired again. Um, we are going to have to shorten our hours, it's typically probably going to be nine to one Monday through Thursday. Uh, we can do other stuff by appointment, but my, my instructions to staff were, we simply provide excellent customer service. We know that not, whoever answers the phone is not going to have the answer, but the expectation is that they can provide good customer service, we can follow up with whatever answer to the questions that the people have.
So you want to bring in an intern maybe on Mondays from number one?
Yes.
Mondays are so busy.
Yeah, Mondays are so busy, and the intern is not going to know anything about the rentals, and that's a very.
and that's a very important day for us because we have to look at everything when we come to work on Mondays.
And, and what, what we're going to have to do, uh, myself included, is, is we're just, we're just going to have to have a little bit more time here um, to do the things that, that we need to do. I am hoping that we can get.
No.
All right, oh, yes, sir.
Did I say that out loud?
What?
You might think about getting with Team Hungry or with the Oscars.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Somebody to come into the, into the library. I've got some things that are pending, going to keep me out.
Okay, so you're talking about Team Hungry for the library?
Well, I don't care.
Well, we thought about them here as well.
Yeah, just somebody to show up.
That's coming in tomorrow.
That's awesome.
If I have to do this audit you talked about, if that happens before you get everything squared away, I'll just, I'll be, I'll be totally pulled away.
Okay, all right. We do actually have an individual from Team Hungry coming over tomorrow morning. She's going to kind of shadow and check out and see what, what we need and, and talk over the schedule and then discuss other scheduling and timing options. But that is going to be, Team Hungry is going to be who we hope to pull from for that. And, um, you know, the young lady that was here tonight, uh, it may come as well and may have some interest as well. So, yeah, we're definitely going to be pulling from, from them because, you know, we do a lot for them and that was.
Yes, yes.
Hey, babe.
You know, even on Monday, you know, if they can work nine to three and then maybe have, because Brandy will leave at one o'clock, maybe have them come in Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday to two, I mean, from one to three. Uh, or twelve to three, just so, you know, let them do it a couple of weeks and maybe say, you know, let's hire you to take care of it.
Yeah, and, and that's what, that's exactly what we're hoping, we're hoping to do.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is everything getting so complicated? And thank you, remember, because these have been on it for so many years, from simple to really, really complicated stuff. And why can't we instead of having three employees, have two full-time employees and then we would be able to give somebody that's truly qualified and a lot of experience, enough incentive, they would be interested in coming here, because it's obviously, if anybody ever came to one of these meetings that know it, it ain't simple.
Right, yeah.
Why can't the council consider that?
Um, we certainly can, we entered into this budget year with one full-time and two part-time's and at the time when we were discussing the budget, we made a very clear decision not to release one of the two employees just so we could combine the position. But our plan had been, pardon, yeah, but no, you're right, you're, you're right, and now, now may be the time to do that. And that's just going to come in, it come in with our budget planning. But yeah, that's, that's probably going to have to be the next step, is we consolidate some, some positions. Because what that does, and really what that does is that allows us to tap into some benefit packages because the prob.
That's what I'm getting at, exactly.
Right, yeah, and the problem is, is with just one employee, the cost is just, it's expensive anyway, but it's prohibitive when you just have one employee, one full-time.
You don't have an option.
You know that one time, in fact, a long time ago, that the city clerk in Sharpburg was the second highest paid clerk in the state. Uh-huh, and I've got it on my computer, I can send you a copy.
Interesting.
The second highest paid in the state. One of those all time in whole Georgia was ahead of them. So if we had the money back then, how come we don't have the money now?
I don't know, I mean, apples to apples. Yep, yeah, liquor tax.
Yep.
Absolutely. So, do, Dina, do we need to go into executive session?
Um, yes, you need to, yes.
Okay, all right, if I can get a motion to slide into executive session?
Any questions?
Sir.
All right, Elizabeth has the first, Dan has the second, all in favor.
And I need you to approve the affidavit.
Dan has the second, all in favor?
I need you to sign it.
Unanimous?
I'm signing it.
Thank you. So we're now back in regular session. Is there any, any other items we need to discuss?
Nope, that's it.
All right, if I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Tom, that's for you.
Tom, you have the second, Stan, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
That's Brad.
Meeting adjourned.